Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting on September 10th, 2018. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will follow that immediately by an invocation by Pastor Terry Martenson, Golden Hill Seventh Day Adventist Church.
Audience, please rise. Please join me in this pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At ease.
Let's pray. Dear Father, I thank you for our community here of Bellevue and the joy that we have in living here. I thank you for each of these folk here this evening that have such an interest in making our community a wonderful place to live. Lord, I invite your presence, that you would be here with the decisions that are being made, that you would give wisdom and thoughtfulness. Lord, I also think of those who live in our community, so many of them in the service. Lord, I'm thankful for their willingness to sacrifice their lives, their time to guarantee our freedom and our safety, and we just ask that you would be close to them and give them safety. We thank you for all that you do for us. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Just like to add that the pledge was led by the Senior Patrol Leader and the Boy Scout Troop 231. Thank you. As you notice, the mayor is not here this evening. She is attending the 50th Annual U.S.-Japan Association Conference, which is being hosted in Nebraska this year in Omaha, and she's at a dinner for that function tonight. So you have me instead. Okay. Sabrina, call to order and roll call.
Mr. Hanson? Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
Mr. Mudry?
Here.
Mr. Preister?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. A copy of the act is on the wall in the back of the city council chambers. Item 5, Approval of Agenda: Consent Agenda Claims and Advisory Committee Reports.
Item 5A is approval of the agenda.
I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Shannon and a second by Councilman Burns.
Mr. Mudry.
Any discussion? Yes.
I would move to amend the agenda. I would move to remove item 12B from our agenda for this evening.
Okay. Dies for lack of a second.
Unless Mr. Mudry wants to second it.
Okay. Are we up to 5B?
In a vote.
Yeah, any other discussion on the agenda?
Did you second the motion?
No.
No, okay.
We need a vote on the agenda.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, please vote on approval of the agenda.
Delete it, all you got to.
Thought it was the only one.
Type in approval. All voted yes.
Item 5B is approval of the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion unless a city council member or the acting mayor request removal of a specific item, in which case it will be placed in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 5B1 is approval of the minutes of the August 27, 2018 city council meeting. Item 5B, approval, excuse me, acknowledgement of the receipt of the August 23, 2018 minutes from the Planning Commission. Item 5B3, approval of claims. Item 5B4, approval of applications for waivers of hunting regulations. And item 5B5, approval and ratification of the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Bellevue and the International Association of Firefighters Local 4906 to comply with recently enacted legislation concerning military leave. Mr. Acting Mayor and council members, are there any of these items that you'd have removed from the consent agenda?
Councilman Burns?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Burns, second by Councilman Preister. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Next item on the agenda, item 6, Special Presentations.
Item 6A is a proclamation designating September 17 through 23, 2018 as Constitution Week in the City of Bellevue.
I'll go down to the front. We'll be presenting this, and the Boy Scout Troop 231 will be accepting the proclamation.
City of Bellevue, Nebraska, Office of the Mayor, proclamation designating September 17 through 23, 2018 as Constitution Week in Bellevue, Nebraska. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to afford official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, and this was done by Rita Sanders, Mayor of Bellevue, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, and I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, and sign September 10, 2018 by Mayor Rita Sanders.
The next item is item 6B, which is proclamation designating September as Library Card Sign-Up Month.
Library Card Sign-Up Month 2018. Whereas a library card is the most important school supply of all, whereas libraries play an important role in the education and development of our children, whereas library programs serve students of all ages, from early literacy to homework help to GED classes, whereas libraries empower all people to pursue their interests, discover their passions, and achieve their highest potential as learners and citizens, whereas librarians bring communities together, creating welcoming and inclusive spaces for students of all backgrounds to learn together, whereas libraries are constantly transforming and expanding their services to meet the needs of the communities they serve, whereas libraries promote equity, making digital technology and information equally accessible to all. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Rita Sanders, on behalf of the Bellevue Public Library, proclaim September Library Card Sign-Up Month in the City of Bellevue, Nebraska, and encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today.
Item 7, Liquor Licenses.
Item 7A is Old Town Tavern application for a special designated liquor license to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits in a beer garden during, excuse me, Oktoberfest at 107 West Mission Avenue on October 13, 2018 from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Is there anyone from Old Town Tavern here this evening?
Okay.
Oh, in the back. You want to come up?
Please come forward. And you can sign in, and if you have anything to say about your application.
This is our third or fourth Oktoberfest we've had down here in Bellevue since I opened up, and we've had no problems. People generally like it, and it gives us a little more exposure to Old Town Bellevue.
Thank you, thank you. I'll open it up for public hearing if there's anyone who wishes to speak on this item. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Wishes of Councilman Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve item 7A.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Preister, second by Councilman Burns. Discussion? I guess I'll call myself. I will be abstaining from this and the next item for personal religious reasons. Okay, please vote. Thank you.
All voted yes.
So that was a four to... Four, four zero.
Four yes, vote one abstention.
Okay.
Item 7B is St. Matthew's Catholic Community Application for a Special Designated Liquor License to Serve Beer, Wine, and Distilled Spirits During Trivia Night at 12210 South 36th Street on October 19, 2018 from 5:30 p.m. to 11:30 p.m.
Yes, thank you, I'm Scott Eversole, and I'm the event coordinator, and this is our third trivia night. It's taken over as one of our major fundraisers for the church and the activities that we do. And going forward, as we broke ground yesterday for our new churches, it's going to be a big event to expand our community involvement and support. So we appreciate the board considering our application and be glad to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions? Okay, open this for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may do so. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Cook?
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, St. Matthew Catholic Community Application for a Special Designated Liquor License to Serve Beer, Wine, and Distilled Spirits during trivia night at 12210 South 36th Street on October 19, 2018 from 5:30 p.m. to 11:30 p.m.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Cook, second by Councilman Burns. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Four yes votes, one abstention, motion carries.
Item 7C is St. Mary's Church of Bellevue Application for a Special Designated Liquor License to Serve Beer and Wine during a trivia night at 903 West Mission Avenue on October 19, 2018 from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Good evening, I'm William Westling. I'm here on behalf of the Home and School Association of St. Mary's School. This is our sixth annual trivia night, and we always have a good time, haven't had any problems, and we're looking forward to another great evening. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions? With that, I'll open it up for public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on this item may do so. Okay, see none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Cook?
Thank you. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, St. Mary's Church of Bellevue Application for a Special Designated Liquor License to Serve Beer and Wine during a trivia night at 903 West Mission Avenue on October 19, 2018 from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Cook, second by Councilman Shannon. Discussion, I will be abstaining from this item as well. I just said two items before, but also this one for religious and personal reasons. Okay, please vote.
Vote is four to one, one abstention. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 8, Ordinances for Adoption, Third Reading.
Item 8A is Ordinance Number 3908, Amending Section 2-30 of the Bellevue Municipal Code Concerning the Order of Business. The title of the ordinance is an ordinance to amend Section 2-30 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the city council's order of business to repeal such section as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Councilman Shannon?
I would move to approve Ordinance 3908.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Shannon, second by Councilman Cook. Discussion? I introduce this, so I'll talk about it a little bit. I think one of our prime responsibilities as a council is to monitor the budget. And I think we have a responsibility to be accountable and transparent in doing that, which is a reason why I feel it should be a standing item on the council agenda and stated as such. I, you know, I don't like regulations and ordinances in general. I understand they're necessary for many things. We have a lot of code ordinances on our citizens, and I think we need to, I'm okay with expanding and adding a little bit to an ordinance to, to not force, but to enforce, I guess, accountability and transparency of the council and of the city on the budget and letting the public in on that during our meetings. So that's why I brought this ordinance forward. And the other, Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the point. I'll add counterpoint. I think we have good accountability. I think we have good transparency. Every month, I get a complete budget report. It's very thorough. It's sometimes got more information than I have time to deal with, but it's there, it's regularly there, and I appreciate that Marcy sends it to us so regularly. We also are able to contact our finance director or our finance department or our city administrator at any time in between meetings or in between any briefings. We can also request a specific briefing if we think that there isn't enough accountability. In addition to that, I think our finance director is readily available individually or for briefings in three-on-three. So I tend to not want to add something to the code or to statute that really isn't necessary and that seems to be indicating that staff aren't doing their job. That was not stated. However, I think there's an implication that that's the case. I personally don't feel that, and I have not heard from any constituents or any members of the public that they don't see us giving them enough information. So I think it's better to vote this down and move on. Thank you.
Councilman Shannon?
Since I represent the entire city as the councilman at large, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to support this because we need to stand up for the citizens and show them that we are there representing them, we're there standing up for transparency and for them their right to have information. And a quarterly briefing on finances is something the public's going to get that, you know, they don't get to see our emails, they don't get to see what Marcy sends you. But yeah, I think quarterly briefings on the finances are an excellent idea. I think it's good for transparency, and I'm going to support it for that reason.
Councilman Preister?
Just to clarify, we got an email from the city administrator stating that the quarterly reports will still be given. So with or without this, they're going to be given. Transparency will be there. This is just belts and suspenders. I don't see it's necessary. Thank you.
Then I would call the question and ask for the vote.
Okay, question's been called. Please vote.
The vote is three to two with Mr. Preister and Mr. Burns voting no.
That motion does carry its non-appropriation vote, so if half become a majority of the quorum, it passes.
Item 8B is Ordinance Number 3911, Amending Sections 5.22, 5.23, and 5.24 and 5.26 of the Bellevue Zoning Ordinance Regarding Exercise, Fitness, and Tanning Spas as a permitted use in the BG, BGM, BGH, and FX zoning districts. The applicant is the City of Bellevue. The title of the ordinance is Ordinance Number 3911, An Ordinance to Amend Sections 5.22, 5.23, 5.24, and 5.26, or of Ordinance Number 3619 Bellevue Zoning Ordinance, Relating to Exercise, Fitness, and Tanning Spas as a permitted use in the BG, General Business Zoning District, BGM, Metropolitan General Business Zoning District, BGH, Heavy General Business Zoning District, and FX, Flex Space Zoning District, to repeal such sections as heretofore existing and to provide an effective date of the ordinance and to provide for the publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
I'd move to approve 8B.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve by Councilman Shannon, second by Councilman Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Okay, item nine, Ordinances for Public Hearing, Second Reading.
Item 9A is Ordinance Number 3912, Regarding Creation of a Clean Energy Assessment District. The title of the ordinance is an ordinance to create Article 4 of Chapter 26, Sections 26-51 through 26-55 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the creation of a Clean Energy Assessment District to establish definitions to provide for financing, administration, and collections for energy improvements and renewable energy systems, and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
I'll now open it up for public hearing. Any wishing to speak on this item, may please do so.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Welch. I am candidate for Ward 4 City Council and am also a licensed residential real estate agent. I was called by someone asking me to find out what this is kind of all about. And I talked to the Omaha Planning Commission, I talked to a commercial lender, and I also talked to a gentleman who is in charge of the Pace Capital. Basically, what this is for is for commercial and industrial and multifamily, five units or larger. Does not include residential. And its whole purpose is for upgrading of properties. He stated that 70, 60 to 70% of the money that goes out is for renovations, 30 to 40% is for new. So it is an economic development tool that promotes energy efficiency. The upgrades would include mechanical, roof, lights, windows, solar, geothermal, building controls, storm water management. The assessment is subordinate to the lender, and the lender, the payment is not a lien, and the lender would have to approve it if there is a mortgage on the particular property. So it's up to the bank to give the consent. This particular project is going to be Omaha-administered because Omaha has approved it, Lincoln has approved it, and so it's going to be taken care of by them. It's similar to TIF, but it is private financing. Looks like the financing goes anywhere from 20 to 25 years, and they are not doing residential because there's some federal guidelines that has to be taken care of at this moment. So, and it is for energy measures that are above the building code. So as an example, if you're going to put in a new furnace and you're going to put in a 70% efficient furnace, and you say, geez, could I really save some money by going to 90% efficient? There has to be an engineer that comes in and looks at all the numbers to make sure the numbers make sense in order for the Pace project to move forward. He stated, and I do have a contact if at some point you want more information on this, and he's happy to come and talk to anybody that needs to be talked to. He said of the 10 projects that they submit, two of the 10 are denied. So, questions from any of you on this? So questions from any of you on this?
Questions, Council? Jill?
Yeah, just to reiterate to some of the things that Ms. Welch has stated. This is a private financing mechanism. No city funds will be involved. We will be in accordance with the state statute that was passed that authorizes this kind of work entering into an agreement with the city of Omaha so that they can handle all of the bureaucracy or application reviews and processes, the private financing agreements, et cetera. So we will have very limited participation or expense in reviewing applications that are sought for Bellevue projects. The only thing is, is that the projects will have to comply with code, as she stated, and probably exceed normal city code. I am hopeful that at the third reading of the ordinance in two weeks, that we will have an interlocal agreement to present to the council to effect that partnership with Omaha.
Thank you.
In talking with the Omaha Planning Commission, they said it's purely a financial tool. And again, it's for economic development. So as an example, if there was somebody in Old Town that wanted to upgrade the roof, the furnace, the windows, the face fronts, those types of things, they would submit for this money. And let's, so I tried to get it so I could understand it. So say it's a ten million dollar building, and this is a million dollars' worth of projects that they're going to upgrade, and their operating costs are two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. Now, because of doing these upgrades, the loan payment is back to ninety thousand a year, but they have now saved, the operating costs have gone down to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So not only can they pay for this, plus they're also being able to make some profit off of it as the owner of the building, so to speak. My understanding is there is a building right now that's looking into this, but it is still up to the bank to consent if this is, if they can do this type of thing.
Okay. Thank you. Any others like to comment on this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Any other discussion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you. Joe, maybe you can help. I don't understand the annual assessments. If there's a project that's going to occur, how do they assess it? And then is it, I mean, it seems like you're assessing yourself.
That is correct. That is correct. And that'll be all handled as part of the financing agreement that the building owner or the project owner works out with a private lending institution.
Okay. And who approves these? Who, if someone would come in front of the, do they come in front of the city council? Or is there just some administrative person or body that would approve a project?
Based on the interlocal agreement that we proposed to enact with Omaha, the applications will come to Bellevue first. They'll be reviewed for compliance with our code and then forwarded to Omaha for its review and determination as to, again, as Ms. Welch said, meets or exceeds the energy-efficient codes that they will be expected to adhere to. And then if those things are both approved, then the financing agreement will have to be submitted as part of that. Again, it's private financing, and I anticipate that the interlocal agreement is going to be stated such that Omaha will be doing all the administration. If that should change, we'll make sure you know, you're aware of that before the interlocal agreement is asked to be approved.
So it won't come in front of the city council?
It'll come before the Omaha City Council primarily.
For a project in
If, if, if the interlocal agreement is written such that they, Omaha desires Bellevue to approve it, then it'll come before you.
I, I would like to see, you know, Omaha's review of it and approval along with ours first. I guess, not knowing where it's going to be approved, I think there's got to be, my thought would be is there would be some council action on this from the city of Bellevue.
Well, again, it's private financing. You don't have to worry about any public dollars from Bellevue being expended. So we'll have to see how Omaha chooses to do it.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, I believe Omaha has their planning commission taking care of it, don't they? Isn't their planning director in charge of this program?
It's Omaha's planning board that is involved, not a commission, and it is through the planning department.
So is our planning department going to look at it then and not our council?
As I said, I believe our, our planning department would be the first stop in an application review.
Councilman Shannon, they do have a committee, similar to TIF, where they have a committee that it gets submitted to. And it has to, it has to meet the building code requirements. And as Mr. Maggiely said, there's no cost to the city to do this. And then it's, again, up to the bank whether or not they want to take this on or not.
I just think we're building a really convoluted process here where Bellevue projects are going to have to go up to Omaha because we don't want to set up our own committee.
Well, what hap-
Go ahead.
Well, sorry to interrupt, but what happens is, is now we have to set up a committee of people to do this, and we have to administrate all of this where Omaha's kind of got it running, so to speak. As of right now, they've only had two hotels that have applied for the money. A lot of the commercial lenders are not even well aware of what this is. It's strictly a financing tool to help economic development at this moment.
So right now, their jurisdiction does not include Bellevue?
Their jurisdiction would expand to include Bellevue based on the interlocal agreement that is authorized under the state statute.
All right.
And we're doing this simply as a matter of fact, a matter of efficiency. So we don't have to create our own bureaucracy and step-by-step process. It's already in place in Omaha. The state allows for us to partner with Omaha, and that's the recommendation that you have before you.
Okay. Councilman Price here? Thank you, Mayor. I, Ms. Welch, thank you. That was a very good explanation, very clear, and from my understanding of it, very accurate as well. So I appreciate that. What I didn't hear you say, I think it was implied, whether you support it or not.
You know, I think anything that we can do to help the city of Bellevue with economic development and incentivize either current building owners or new building owners to come in, and there's additional funding that they can get that doesn't cost them out of their pocket, I'm, 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 I'm good with it. And basically, in talking to, you know, the, the commercial person, he wasn't well aware of it. So I recommended that this person that is in charge of PACE get in contact with him so he knows more about it. In talking to the Bellevue City Office, they, again, it's, it's new, so they're still kind of working their way through all of this as to what it is. But again, they specifically said it's another financing tool. So if you have someone that's going to renovate a building, they have an opportunity to make the building more energy efficient, make it look good, replace that nasty old roof with something that they can finance over twenty to twenty-five years, improve the building, save their costs, and pay back over twenty to twenty-five years because maybe there isn't a bank out there that's willing to loan them money on a roof. Now, it's all based on the owner of the building being able to qualify for everything, you know, and the integrity of that person and the business is making money. And, you know, so there, it's not just, you apply for it, you got it. There's quite a few credentials that you have to get through.
Including the cost itself, the high fee for application, the annual fee, the percentage fee? Do you have any comments on those fees? I believe those fees are all based upon what Omaha is going to be charging. And so we're just essentially piggybacking on what Omaha has established. And I think, although I don't know, they're figuring that's what it's going to cost them to administer it. So that's what they're charging. Does seem a little steep to me. And if we're really incentivizing and wanting people to do this, I just question how costly this is going to be for them.
Well, again, we didn't have that discussion about the fees. I was trying to just learn as much as I could about the program so that I could understand it and, and, you know, because someone had questioned me about it. And it's like, I need to figure out what this is all about.
Sure.
And I did not ask them the specifics about the fees and those types of things. And again, I have a contact who has stated that he is happy to come and talk to anybody that he needs to talk to about this.
The proof will be in the applications.
And again, Omaha's only got two hotels that they're working on at this moment. So it, it hasn't really caught on. It's a new program that was, you know, blessed by the state. And so they're kind of working their way through it to try and figure out, you know, how it's going to work and what it's going to happen. I think, you know, again, there's a, a building in Bellevue that this is why this whole thing happened. And there's a few things that have to happen before this building will even move forward on the pace. And if this, if X doesn't happen, they're not moving forward. So the, the owner still needs to be conscientious about what they're doing because they do have to pay the money back. But it is not a lien, and it is a non-accelerating loan.
Thank you.
Yes.
One thing in my reading of the statutes, and I, I don't know if you were able, if you can clarify this or not. It appears to me that the loans attached to the property, not to the person taking the loan out.
From what I understand, that is correct.
Okay, so if I take the loan out and sell the building next year, someone else has to pay it off. Because it's going with the building.
I would, I would agree with that specifically because those improvements went with the building, not with you.
Yeah, and they're attached to the property.
Right. And, and again, the, the bank has to agree that it, that it's going to be ahead of the mortgage that's being paid. And there may be a bank out there that says, not interested.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was talking to Mr. Sullivan before the meeting, and there is a requirement for a subordination because you could have a first mortgage in place already and then go get a PACE loan, and the primary lender not know that their loan just got subordinated, so.
They, they would know. They have to know because it, they have to be notified that something's going to come in ahead of them. And the bank would have to know because, again, the bank has to bless the, the PACE, the PACE mortgage.
Yeah, and there, there is a requirement in the statute for the subordination to be signed before the application's approved. So that was, that was one of my concerns in looking at the program is, you know, are we going to be, you know, stepping on the toes of first mortgages?
And, you know, in talking to the commercial banker, if they feel that the project is worthwhile, the person applying for it has a good track record, the numbers start to make sense, they'll sign off on this all day long. But there's a lot of things that have to happen in place before they're willing to move forward. Again, it's just another financing tool to help incentivize some people to do some things. And I understand your question about the fees. However, if you've got someone who owns a ten million dollar building, I mean, that would be nice, you know, to have that. You know, the fees don't, they always are able to figure out a way to get those fees. But for the little guy, yeah, it's, it's expensive to be able to do that.
Okay. Any, any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think I closed the public hearing already, right? Okay.
Moving on to item nine B, ordinance number 3914 sewer rates increase. The title of the ordinance is an ordinance to amend section 30 dash 137 of the Bellevue Municipal Code establishing minimum monthly sewer charges for residential and commercial users in the city of Bellevue. To repeal section 30 dash 137 of the Bellevue Municipal Code as heretofore existing and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Okay. Open this item up for a public discussion. Anyone interested?
Epiphany is here. Would you like a briefing from her first?
Come forward and, yeah.
So overall, the report that I put forward is pretty straightforward. It's, the increases are pretty much a pass-through cost. We still are monitoring the amount of our budget that's spent on processing that's directly just paying the bills. It's like keeping the lights on. So we have that fee increase that was scheduled out over five from the city of Omaha. We also have our annual fee increase from MUD that we're covering. That's the administrative cost of processing and basically our regular COI costs that we're, that we are covering here and taking care of some capital improvement needs that are all budgeted on. And in the report, any questions that you guys got for me?
Questions, Council? I've got one, Epiphany. So you're saying it's, it's basically a pass-through because Omaha's rates are going to increase, what, about five point two percent a year?
I would say basically is a loose term. We're also covering our capital improvement needs that we've put forward. And of course, we're taking care of our other fee increases and our just basically CPI kind of increases. So, you know, you have your, your in-contract salary increases for staffing. You have your materials and gas and everything that goes out by that nominal, just like the rest of the budgets do.
So we're looking at about an eight percent increase for next year?
Eight percent in the first two years so that we can, yep, so that we can get a few capital projects completed. I also shared some information that came back from our conditions assessment study and how we've been able to move those into projects. So we're about ninety-five percent complete on design on a very large project for Old Town Bellevue. And we've also in-sourced some contracting of our own, for our own staffing and our, being able to pick up the pace in terms of doing some repairs. So it should all pretty much be pointed out in there. So I would say it's not a hundred percent of a pass-through, but for the most part, the majority of that's a pass-through. And then you have a straight six percent on the rest of them. And then as soon as Omaha does their rate study again, we will be able to look at ours again.
Thank you. I know we have a lot of sewer issues to work in the city, so.
Yep, we're taking care of the older parts first and kind of working on new development areas as well, which is exciting. So that's all in that report as well.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yeah.
I would just urge caution as we do this. The compounding effect of doing this over the next five years is a thirty-eight point nine percent increase in, in rates overall. And so we do have a lot of elderly people in Bellevue. We do have a lot of people on fixed incomes. And a forty percent jump in sewer rates is going to hit some people.
Yeah, I think that's across the board, not just in, you know, Bellevue, but in the region as well. I think everybody, and, and I get a lot of this feedback from residents as well. Every resident that calls, I stop and talk to them. And I hear a lot of, wow, you know, my sewer bill is higher than my water bill. How is this possible? And it's not just us, it's everybody, you know, the Clean Water Act that was, that's continuing to be implemented really put some restrictions on how we can release those affluent flows. And so that really increases the cost of processing. And that's one part of it. The other compounded part of it is just aging infrastructure. And I think you can throw any rock out there to any city and especially, you know, some of the older cities like Bellevue. And you recognize that infrastructure and specifically underground infrastructure is very aged. So I wish there was a better answer. You know, I wish there was a lot more foresight many, many years ago when the infrastructure was put in. But at this point, you know, maybe we could look for other options to be helping those, those at need residents.
Yeah, well, as, as a business owner that has a business that uses a lot of water, okay? Yeah, this is going to hit the bottom line.
It will hit the bottom line across the board. I anticipate people looking at, for probably the first time in a long time, how to save water in your household. Looking at your fixtures within your household, checking those basement bathrooms for leaks. As a business owner, looking for water reuse opportunities. Those are all things that, there are technologies out there. There are fixtures out there. But you can quickly do a return on your investment for some of these things, especially when you know your historical flow, what those savings might bring by implementing some of these new practices or technologies. So those are things that I've been helping people with. And they call and they talk to me about it, and I say, let's, let's look at your water bill. And for the first time ever, people are opening their water bill and recognizing what their usage is. And I think that's going to get more permanent.
Thank you. Mr. Maggiely?
Epiphany, before you get away, I'm sure Eugene probably is going to want to know if this ordinance is passed, what would be the effective date of the change in rates?
So they, it is going to be just like So they, it is going to be just like Omaha's are, um, we used to have a stagger date, but now we are, um, January 1st to December 30th. So this will be taking place in January and every increase will be January 1st.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Roberts?
Just want to point out one thing too. Uh, the city of Omaha is going to a five-year ordinance, which is why we're following suit with the five-year.
Right.
Just, just for clarification, so people know why we're doing five years.
Thank you. Uh, we're still open for a public hearing, anyone else that would like to, uh, to speak on this item? Okay, the, uh, third reading then will be on, uh, September 24th. I should have said that for the previous item as well. All right, uh, item 10, ordinances for introduction, first reading none. Item 11, public hearing on matters other than ordinances.
Item 11A is public hearing on the fiscal year 2019 through two, through fiscal year 2024. Uh, city of Bellevue capital improvement plan. Mr. Shuchuk, any comments you'd offer?
As noted in my memo to the council, um, the first year of the C I P coordinates and is, matches the budget that was approved, uh, by the council two weeks ago, uh, totaling 13 million, 189,295 dollars in capital projects. Um, and about 2 million of that being funded from outside city sources and the rest being from city revenue. Total with the capital projects for all six years is almost 130, 130 million, uh, with 98 million being funded by the city and 31 million, or almost 32 million coming from outside sources. The out-years of the C I P do include, uh, major projects, uh, new library, new aquatic center, 15 and 10 million dollars each, uh, new public works facility, uh, there, there is not a cost in there, that's still to be determined. Uh, one of the numbers that was given initially was about 11 million dollars for that facility. Major road projects, 36th Street from Highway 370 to Plattview Road, uh, 36th Street between Cornhusker and Highway 370, and 25th Street between Cornhusker and Gilmore Roads. Those are, well, some of those will be funded from Department of Transportation, others can be city cost. What you have before you tonight also includes, um, as a result of your action at the last meeting, 750,000 dollars uh, designated for the L V eight forty's infrastructure improvements each year. I will try to answer any questions you have.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, I believe that also, I don't, didn't hear you mention it, but we just talked about wastewater and new sewer infrastructure. I believe there's a $2 million capital improvement for sewer infrastructure in the first year and a little over roughly a million and a half the second year. So I, it looks like we're doing exactly what we needed. But we're starting to phase in these old systems being replaced or repaired before they break down and before we have to pay even more to try to correct it in the middle of winter or usually it's the worst weather times when these things go bad. And we have had some of those to do, so. The 2 million is under wastewater and it's in the first year, next year.
A, a new forest main in the south part of Bellevue, uh, for 1.7 in the first year. And then several years of the C I P, they do have, uh, infrastructure replacement and, starting with the Old Town area.
Thank you. Just tying it in with what we already just did, it's together.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, I got two quick, uh, questions. Uh, I don't know if I should ask Jeff or Mr. Shuchuk, but it says preliminary design and engineering for a new library. Could you expand on that as far as the, I can understand the design of maybe what one would look like? What would all incorporate on a engineering part of it?
This would be, well, depending on where the location is, this would include engineering for site work and architectural design, mechanical, H B A C, that type stuff. So it's the actual, um, brick and mortar portion of the project.
Okay. I, and also, the second question is on the, the cross pedestrian, pedestrian bridge at Galvin and Hanson. It says the design of that. Is that something that's going to need to be?
That's something that's been need, looked at for probably 10 years now. And, uh, so that would include, we, we did have some analysis done on already. Now this would be the actual, like the structural engineering, what we'd have to do for the abutments. Maybe something like the painting of it, painting of it, repainting.
You don't think it doesn't need to be knocked down or rebuilt?
No, I don't believe so, no.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Manjumelli?
That's okay.
Okay.
I think you got the answer.
All right. Okay, what are the wishes of the council? Mr. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, I will move to approve item 11A.
Second.
You need to open and close public hearing?
Oh, oh, sorry, thank you. I'll, uh, open the public hearing on this item. Anyone, uh, wishing to speak on it may come forward.
I thought we had already done.
No. No, we hadn't. Okay, see none, I close the public hearing. Councilman Preister?
Thank you again, Mayor. I, I will move to approve item 11A.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Preister, second by, uh, Councilman Burns, discussion? Shannon?
Okay, what was the number you put out there for the five years, 120 what?
The six-year total is 1, 129,749,295.
Okay, so roughly 130 million. Okay, so we really only have about 10 to 11 million a year that we can spend on capital improvement projects. So what we're approving here tonight is a wish list full of things, most of which aren't going to come true. I, I, I'm a little lost here. We only have 10 to 11 million a year to spend, so why did we put a wish list together that's 130 million long?
What was the city's, uh, portion of that, Chris?
The, the city's portion is approximately just over 98 million. And, and we are looking at, as my memo noted, um,
Some of those are grants?
Private, uh, kind of, well, those, those would be, the private would be not part of the city contributions.
I guess I'm having a hard time.
Still 16 to 17 million a year for the city.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't say that I could support a list of projects that we know we can't afford. I mean, is that what we're voting on?
That is not what we're voting on. Uh, what we have is, as, as, uh, Mr. Shuchuk identified, the first year matches the budget. Uh, the second through fifth year or sixth year, uh, are projects that are in the, in the hopper that will be dependent upon, uh, federal aid, state aid, uh, private investment, votes of the public uh, for certain projects, uh, et cetera. So it is not a wish list, but it's a plan that we're asking the council to approve, uh, to get us to where the, um, city can, uh, keep growing. And as, uh, you previously heard, keep, uh, uh, economic development going in the city of Bellevue. Again, so, like Mr. Cook mentioned, the, uh, the library project. Uh, we currently are under a feasibility assessment right now to identify what the appropriate size and potential location of a new library, uh, should be. Uh, the development of plans, uh, preliminary plans and specifications will help us identify then a cost estimate that will probably necessitate not only private investment, but, uh, a bond issue that, uh, could be presented to the public for their support, uh, for, uh, that proposed improvement. Uh, we have the same situation with an aquatics, uh, venue that, uh, perhaps would serve the southwest portion of the city. So all of these things are part of the continued, we hope, growth of the city of Bellevue under an orderly and planned, um, process. Uh, next year's budget, uh, will include projects that will be, uh, proposed, uh, that will match that year's allocation of the capital improvement plan that we are working under. The, the, the plan will be subject to modification over the next five to six years so that appropriate financing and scheduling of the improvements can be done in an orderly, fiscally responsible process.
Okay, so just because the project's on this list, there's no guarantee that that department's going to get that fire truck or this department's going to get this road or, you know, whatever. Because this list far exceeds our capabilities at the moment, okay? So I understand these are things that we're planning, that they're coming down the road, but we're going to only be able to do what we can afford. So I don't want it thrown back in our face like it was before, saying, well, it made it to the capital improvement plan and you voted on it. Well, we can only do what we can afford, even if it makes a plan.
I don't know when that was ever said to you, at least in the last year and a half.
Fire department debate, but that's, that's another matter.
Uh, there was, there was no debate on the fire department, o- okay.
Okay. You got any other discussion? Okay, uh, please vote.
Vote is four to two with Mr. Shannon voting no.
Well, how could it be four?
I cast two votes, no.
Four to one, Ken?
Five to one with Mr. Shannon voting no.
Can't be five, we only have five councilmen here tonight.
So I can't count today. Four to one with Mr. Shannon voting no.
Okay, thank you, Sabrina. All right. Uh, item 12, resolutions.
Item 12A is resolution number two zero one eight dash two six, bond reimbursement, reimbursement for the 2019 paving improvements.
wishes of the council? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number 2018 dash 26.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Cook, second by, uh, Councilman Burns, any discussion? See none, please vote.
And I can count, all voted yes.
How many is that?
Item 12B is resolution number two zero one eight dash two seven, requesting the city council, give notice to the property owners at 1501 Galvin Road South to repair the sidewalk adjacent to the property according to the city of Bellevue's specifications.
Mr. Mayor, I will be recusing myself from this discussion.
Thank you. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve item 12B as just read.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Preister, second by Councilman Burns, uh, discussion, Councilman Cook?
Mr. Roberts, what, what does this actually do? I, what I want you to do is just, I, I'm assuming, I know the answer is that he has to make these corrections, but we've gone through a process.
Correct.
And now we are to the point.
It starts with a certified letter, um, which was received back, well, it was sent out in November, received midway through December. Because of the timeframe, then, uh, Grace was awarded to not have to do anything until spring. They've had several discussions with the property owners. Here it is, we're in September already, so winter's just right around the corner. So it's something that we don't want to go another winter with the safety hazard out there. So we've gone through the whole steps, whole process. We've actually sent two certified letters out and now we're going through the resolution to, uh, allow 30 days to make sure it gets repaired.
So this letter tells him to complete it within 30 days?
That's correct.
And we received a memo, or I received an email stating that he has found a contractor and was told it would be completed within two weeks. So it's just, it's, it's an issue that the letter's sent. If that contractor fulfills their obligation, it'll be fixed within that 30 days and this all goes away.
Right, it's just all procedural.
Okay, and I, I walked the property, um, today. And, uh, I, if, if I understood it right, it was probably s- north of the north entrance of this facility with that, it's.
Yeah, I believe that's where it's at.
Okay, well, I, I walked the sidewalk today and I can tell you that the part that I saw in the pictures, I would say without a doubt, this work needs to be done. So thank you.
Other discussion? Uh, so the status as far as we know is, uh, a contract has been signed with, with a, a firm to, to do the work. And they expect to do it within two weeks right now, is, is that what we understand?
I'm not sure if a contract's been awarded or not, I've never seen one.
Okay, okay.
I spoke to the owner of the company and he hopes to have the work, uh, started this week. The only thing that would preclude them, uh, from completing the project or even starting the project this week is the availability of material. Uh, there, there's a substantial amount of polyurethane foam that they need, uh, in order to make this repair. And they, uh, are determining whether they can get delivery of the, uh, repair product uh, so that it can be pumped under the sidewalk to raise it up. Uh, our recommendation is to go forth with this, uh, go forward, I should say, with this resolution. And if the work is done, uh, before the next council meeting, uh, then we can so advise.
Okay. Any other, other discussion? Uh, so the, what is, what is the date right now then by which the work, uh, needs to be done?
October 10.
October 10, okay. All right, any further discussion? Please vote.
Mr. Sullivan? Can you, um, put press abstain on Mr. Shannon's?
If I can figure it out.
Or Mr. Cook can do it. Thank you. Four yes votes, one abstention. Motion carries.
Yes, Mr. Manjumelli?
Uh, Councilman Cook, uh, referenced a, uh, email that, uh, council members all received that, uh, I think I need to, uh, advise on. Uh, this is an email dated Thursday, September 6th, 2018, sent at 3:19 PM from Mr. Shannon to all the city council members. Joe, I agree that some dumbass sent me a letter last December after the snow was flying, asking me to fix a sidewalk. Goes on to talk about a c- contract went out for bids and it's going to be awarded rainy summer, contractors backed up. And that the work would be completed within the next two weeks. And then the closing comment, so the ongoing pattern of harassment by the city of Bellevue against my business is again unnecessary as this matter was handled. I'm just advising Mr. Shannon that as a city employee, you receive a check for your service as a city council member. Uh, you are subject to the same rules and regulations that we have with. Uh, you are subject to the same rules and regulations that we have with regard to harassment and belittling, denigrating, insulting or ridic- ridiculing an individual or an individual's group, making derogatory or offensive comments. Uh, that's what your email, uh, is in my opinion. It's demeaning to city employees. It's a continuing effort that you have with, um, started with the, uh, permits and inspections section and now is spread into public works. Uh, if you'd like a copy of the harassment section of the code, or excuse me, the, uh, yes, the city code, I'll be glad to send it to you. But this kind of comments are not gonna be tolerated anymore.
Well, let me make it abundantly clear that I am not a city employee and I don't work for you and you have no authority over an elected official. If this item is done, Mr. Mudria asks we move the agenda.
Okay, let's, let's move on. All right.
That was extremely inappropriate, sir.
Okay, item thirteen, uh, current business.
Item thirteen A is the approval to purchase a John Deere backhoe loader and breaker from the United Rentals for the wastewater department in the amount of sixty-one thousand nine, five hundred ninety dollars.
Councilman Burns.
I move to approve item thirteen A. Second.
Motion by Councilman Burns, second by Councilman Preister. Any discussion? Councilman Cook.
I would just like to make a quick comment. I know Epiphany, I think, left, Mr. Roberts is still here. But I think, I don't know how they came across this used piece of equipment, but if it serves their needs and I'm assuming, uh, a new one would c- cost probably two, three times this, I'm glad to see that, uh, they went out to look at, or at least a used one and hopefully we'll get a lot of years of use out of it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you for, uh, somebody listening and, uh, following through on used equipment. Uh, once you take a new piece of equipment off the lot, it is a used piece of equipment, so, uh, there's no reason not to save the public's money and save taxpayer money and buy used equipment like this. This is a thirty thousand dollar savings to the taxpayers and thank you for doing it. Um, I asked some more questions on this today and I know everyone doesn't have access to their emails, so I'll, I'll just hit a highlights of a few of them. Uh, this is gonna come out of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen enterprise fund. There was sufficient monies left in there to pay for this item. I would hang on a second. Is the motion to approve as read? Is that what you did?
Yes.
Can I offer a friendly amendment, please? I would offer an amendment that we approve this for an amount no more than, because in my discussions with Jeff Roberts today, they are going to go negotiate on this. So we don't wanna tie a specific amount down right now, but just no more than, if, if that's acceptable in the motion.
Just is, ask, is that acceptable, uh, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Amount not to exceed?
Not to exceed, correct.
Sixty-one.
I would amend my motion to include that.
Thank you, okay. Um,
And you accept the second?
The unit in question is a twenty-twelve, its cost new would have been ninety-one thousand. So we're saving thirty thousand on it. It's got more than half its, uh, useful life left on it. Um, and we don't need a trailer, uh, which was the other question I asked, it could be driven on the road. So, um, no, great job, thank you.
Okay. Any, uh, further discussion? Okay, please vote.
All voted yes.
Okay, item fourteen, administration reports. Please, uh, limit your questions, discussion to items in the report. Any, any discussion? Okay. Item fifteen, uh, public request to be heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution number thirty-five regarding principles of conduct and decorum, which states, any statements made during city council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals, regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, a city official or employee, or a member of the general public in City Code Section two dash sixty-eight regarding manner of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Uh, speakers shall limit their presentations to five minutes. And as you come forward, please sign in and, and state your name.
Dr. Chuck Frederick, one five one one Madison Street. Uh, first thing I wanna give, uh, kudos to the, uh, Public Works Department. The, uh, black topping they've done on, uh, on, uh, Harville and on, on Cornhusker and, and LG Boulevard are really nice. When I came down, you can see I have a Minnesota shirt on, I'm from Minnesota. I came down here many years ago, we had a lot of black top up there and it wasn't used down here because they said they couldn't use the same black top because it was too hot down here. Obviously something had happened and, uh, it's sure a lot quieter when those streets are black topped versus concrete. So I, those are really good. Couple of things, you, people are getting close to election time and a lot of people are encouraging early voting. I would discourage e- early voting. I would wait because of the, the things that could happen in the next thirty days. Uh, things could develop that you might wanna rethink what, how you're gonna vote. My website is chuckfrederick dot com and I would certainly encourage you to look at that before your vote. The other thing that disturbs me is that, uh, I'm getting a little tired of the tax on Pat Shannon. Uh, he got more votes than the Marigot for the election. People wanted him in here. He's doing a great job trying to save us some money and these personal attacks and try, is it only one sidewalk in Bellevue that, uh, that had this problem back in December or January, whenever it was? Uh, I think, I think this has to stop. It's time to grow up and start acting like people and do, do the job for the city that we should, should be doing. Thank you.
Anyone else for public request to be heard? Okay, we'll close public requests to be heard. Uh, next item, closed session is none. Item seventeen, adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Motion by, uh, Councilman Shannon, second by Councilman Burns. Any discussion? Please vote.
You ever speak to me that way again, sir?
All voted yes.
Don't ever do that to me in public.